Of the general fund and utilities. In utilities, during the process, there'll be no request for any rate increases in water or sewer this year. The current 9% increase that we've passed over the past three years, 333, is dedicated to debt associated with past and present projects, which will average about $213,000 a month for the next five years. And then, we also have debt that will stretch out 10 and even 20 years for water and sewer. The 2005 SPOLOST is the foundation of the water and sewer equipment upgrades and some projects for the 2017-18 budget, just as it was for the 2016-17, the year we're in now. SPOLOST will fund water and sewer projects and equipment at about $1.7 million. There are various step raises in several utility departments and one new employee in electric to have two four-man crews. Utility budget, it all balances and it all works out. In the general fund, there is no new capital and there's no projects of any substance. The Peter Street project, of course, is a SPOLOST project, 2011 SPOLOST project. One employee in recreation will be going from part-time to full-time. And one policeman or policewoman is returning from Afghanistan and is included in the new budget. The fire department has step increases due to several new firemen climbing up the ladder, so to speak. In general utilities, a 10% increase in group health is included. General fund revenues will be $325,000 less than the current year we're in. And at this time, the general fund is forecasting a $457,000 shortfall. We're also being asked, and outside of that $457,000, we're being asked by the airport authority to loan them $150,000 for engineering for the new corporate hangars. And also, they're looking for the county to match that. And I talked with Jim Ledbetter today, and he said the county did not have in their budget -- he would like for me to call him in the morning and let him know what the city did concerning that. Also talked with John King several weeks ago, and he said the county was proposing a 2% cost of living salary increase. And I clarified that again today with Jim Ledbetter. I don't have anything in the budget for dilapidated housing demolition. And we have about 20 or so of these around. The average cost of legal demo is around $5,000 to $6,000 each. So, we're starting with a $457,000 hole to get out of. And also, I think we'll have to make a decision about the $150,000 for the engineering and consulting on the corporate hangars. So, I asked Jennifer to be here tonight to talk our group insurance with us. I appreciate her being here. She's had a difficult time lately and we all -- she has been in our prayers and her family has. Our health insurance was -- we felt like we were going to get over a 20% increase, but -- and Jennifer bid the health insurance and got bids from those who would. We had, over the past nine months, some very, very poor experience ratings and, you know, everybody sees that. We were able to get that increase down to about 10% due to several factors. So, we're still looking at that and--
Eddie, what does that 10% represent in dollars?
About $344,000 of increase. And so, we had talked about how we were going to divide that up, whether the city would pick up the amount total or the city would cost share, so to speak, with the employees on that. And Linda did some calculations and it affects the lower wage earner probably more so than those who are -- who make $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year.
Eddie, what are we looking at right now on our cost share? What are the employees paying? What percentage and what are the families?
I believe it's about, Linda, 88, 12, in that area.
And I believe industry is 75.5. And when I say industry, that's government too, because that's the school systems also.
Is that 88, 12 in general for all? Or is that -- I mean, I know I've seen different reports, family and single. But 88 is the average?
88.
Okay. I mean, okay, 93.
So, I was looking for ways to find this $457,000. There's several things we can look at. We could, like I said, we could look at some of the health insurance. And I just put some rough numbers down. Say we looked at $50,000 out of that $344,000. We might have to do away with the city planner. That's 60 -- I think it's $65,000. We have 100 in contingency. We might possibly drop that to 50. We have one employee that we could possibly let go, and we have talked about that. And then, we could also go into reserves or we could have a millage rate increase or a combination of those to reach this $457,000. And then, of course, we'll have to decide how we would want to fund the airport.
Did we not already vote on that, Eddie? I thought we voted to pull that out of reserves already. Since that's going to be reimbursed, did we not vote as a council to pull that 150,000 out of reserves? Did we not already make that vote?
For the airport?
Mm-hmm.
I think we kind of agreed with the county that if they would give us time to discuss it in the next budget, we'd like to do that. So, I'm not sure if we took formal action on that, but we can check.
When was that?
I don't know. Two or three months ago.
Eddie, we also talked a little bit about, I know we got-- What are the cost components there?
We can go another year with batteries. And I believe batteries are $15,000.
What was that a cost for those?
The cost--
We've got to trade in, but what was the cost to us? It was so much for four years.
Yeah. We could go a lease to purchase for, I believe it's around $40,000 a year for 65 new carts, gas, fuel injected, and they get like 40, 45 miles to the gallon. And then, at the end of that four-year term, we could -- we would pay $1,000 and we would own the carts. It looks like a gas cart will last 15 years, whereas electric carts, you finally -- it's batteries every four years and then it's batteries every three years as the carts get older.
And when did we buy carts last?
2000--
When did we buy batteries last?
Two years ago. And we've got batteries in this year's budget and we're buying those.
Didn't we buy the new ones, not too many?
New carts? We bought them in 2010. And then, we bought 20 in 2010 and 20 in 2007. And right now, we have-- We have 78 carts and 60 of them are operational. And the others are used for, you know, replacement parts because they're either club cars or they're Yamahas. Well, mainly club cars that we bought for years and we bought the Yamahas this last time around.
Looks like our biggest option that we're going to have to debate and make decisions on is insurance. That's 77% of that shortfall is the increase.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Jennifer, could you come help us on this one?
I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. We did have 120% loss ratio this year, which means the insurance company paid out 20% more than what they got in the previous year. When I looked at that in the past, that's probably the first time we've traded this because when that has happened in the past, you have about 35%. This is because of six claimers, 100,000 claim, seven of them starting over $50,000. We did go out to several different carriers, formal proposing requests. The other thing that's important to note is when blue cross does their renewal, they look at your current credibility, which is what you're tapped into most recently here. They also give you, that's about 25%, 25% as prior experience. We looked at the year that we didn't get an increase. And two years ago, we added voluntary dental indigestion, you know, to hold our rates down.
Do you know what those loss ratios were those two years?
Last year was like 67%. It was pretty, really good year last year. I've got records of that.
Sure, sure.
To get a trend, the new one, which is out of 10% renewal, 12%, normally the insurance company is looking for about a 70% incurred loss ratio. Or anywhere from 70 to 80, depending on how the money's handled. So, after getting the competitive data, Blue Cross did come back and put some pressure on about what we're able to get. And they came back with 20%. But I wanted to go through the spreadsheet a little bit, one that you have in front of me. Our current plan is that--
What's that?
Does everybody have that in front of them?
I've got the email, yeah. Yeah.
You should have. So, currently what we have is a $2,000 deductible. And once the employee meets that deductible, they pay 20% until they have a pocket in total of $4,000 and it can't end up calendar year. That's basically a $12,000 hospital visit and it maxed out under the maximum liability per year. On top of that, of course, you've got co-pays, 35 for PCPs, 45 for specialists. If you've already hit your maximum out of pocket, you don't have to pay that anymore. And the same thing with prescriptions. So, that maximum out of pocket is totally the total life value. Prescription plan right now is $15, basically tier one. A lot of your generic drugs are there, some very low-cost brand names are there. There's a preferred brand, you'll pay 35, 60, enough for three. And you've got something special for injectables and cancer-traveling drugs, and very expensive drugs. Through the number, it's 20% up to 250 per prescription. You have a very comparable plan to that, which is point-of-service plan, you only have two members on that. People will choose that if they're living outside the state and they want to see a doctor just on the bottom of the point-of-service. We went to Aetna United, we got up here, Alliant, and the student did not give us that.
Excuse me just one second, Jennifer. Down here where it says bill premium, does that include the 10% bump?
This is the final number. This is showing the final number.
Okay.
This is not showing the current plan, the current base. These are all final numbers.
Okay.
So, it looks a little odd, but you'll see the bill premium under the HMO is $287,000. And then, on the other column, point-of-service, the bill premium is $2,500 or something. Yes, because you only have two members on that plan. And all the other--
Oh, okay.
Total bill premium--
$290.
-- is the total.
Okay.
Of both the HMO and point-of-service. So, with Aetna, they came forward with a plan, a little different plan design. First of all, on the current plan, you have three deductibles for family and three maximum out-of-pocket for family. That's what the plan design. ACA required that be changed, so if they're on two, we have a little plan to allow people. Well, with that though, they're not fighting any of the other than the ACA requirements, which is the CDB. So, you've got individual deductible debt of $2,000. You also have 20%. It's 20% until they reach a maximum out-of-pocket of $6,850. So, that basically is looking at one hospital, say, about $24,250 and then max out. So, it really puts more burden on an individual that would have a higher claim. That's who that could be. The co-pays are slightly different, a little less for the primary care, a little more for the specialist. And then, you've got your pro-co-pays. Now, the interesting thing about Aetna United in particular, many companies have two ways to contain costs. They can make a very narrow network and put a lot more pressure on those providers. Or they can do a very narrow formulary. So, what Aetna has and what United has is one, very narrow. And what that means to employees would be, the closest that I can sort of help you understand how that works is, with Blue Cross, they also have a very narrow network pharmacy that's available. When we ran what's called a disruption report, which is about as close as I can get to how Aetna's plan would work, 433 prescriptions would have higher co-pays. 338 prescriptions would have no replacement or just drugs in their house. They would be forced to try something different. 93 prescriptions were, for example, if you were taking Centloid, which is a brand name, doctors like to prescribe it, you would be required to change to the generic version of what it has.
$255.
So, in other words, you're going to, if you were to change to a more narrow formulary with any other carrier, it would be a huge disruption when the cops go to the pharmacy. So, that's really kind of the main reason that I'm saying, not that significant, but maybe at the 70% is you would have a real disruption in the pharmacy.
And if I'm looking at this correct, you're looking at basically an $8,000 difference. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Final bottom line versus Aetna being the most reasonable at 282, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which we have the most expensive at 290. And I'm discarding the others.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. And that's kind of how we, our discussion went. I just like to put it out there just so everyone will know. Aetna came in with a broader network, at about 12% increase. United, of course, is pretty much out of the normal. Alliant have more out-of-pocket than they can 8%. So, you're right. But we did have to look at that.
Go ahead.
We've asked this before. Are there other things that we can do? The city, I mean, since last time you've come, it's been a couple of years since you've come. I mean, light the smoking or tobacco use? I mean, before, that kind of got shot down. It was really hard.
First of all, one thing we did a couple of years ago, and Jackie wasn't here at the time, but one of the things that we did in 2014, which was very advantageous for the city, we added an HRA. So, what that does is the employees actually, the card shows a $2,000 deductible, the employees get reimbursed for the second. They pay the first $500 and get reimbursed for the second part of the $500. We're taking on as a city by doing that, more of the liability. So, the maximum liability was pretty bad. It's like $600,000 a year. But actually, our claims are running, when people actually file for claims to be reimbursed, it's $38,000 going up all the way to $56,000 a few more years. That's been very, very good for us to do that. We did also request a couple of years ago, we started doing wellness clinics here.
The screening?
And we have screenings and we have really good participation. If people don't participate in those, they do have higher cost share. That's one thing.
Okay. You said we could do?
Well, she usually says one minute we do that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I was actually talking to Paul about that today, about the co-pays concern. Because that was one of the things I mentioned that I gave two, three years ago that we might do. Did we not increase that amount that we do? I think we get $1,500 now and then the employees actually have a $800 deductible. Could we increase that deductible to the cities actually only having to pay the deductible? So, do employees that actually have a cost to the city that much? We don't have that many employees.
It doesn't cost any employees that much.
Well, no, it's the city that--
The city that much.
Could we make a check into how much we would save by increasing that $1,500 on that to $3,000 or--
That's a really good question. Because with HRA, it's like, you know, you're taking on, it looks like if you do $1,500 per member, that seems like a lot if $600,000. What you really get, we have, we've got 10% of that as a city liability.
Right.
But what you do by increasing the deductible that your employees feel, not the deductible that's on the car.
Right.
Is you really put in, I mean, I argue above sides, Mark.
Sure.
For you to save the money, but also for half the employees, you're putting the burden of that greater deductible on people that are having the bigger spend.
Well, but no, I mean, the city should reimburse them for that.
For you to the pocket?
No. Leave the city, leave the employees the deductible exactly the same and the city reimbursed the difference.
Right.
Just like we do it now, just increase it.
Increase the deductible--
So, we would say-- Yeah.
I think what she's saying, if I'm understanding it right, increase the deductible amount of pocket amount as well as increase the HRA amount. Is that correct?
Yeah. Increase the amount that the city reimburs--
Maybe go from $2,000 to $3,000 and increase the city's part of that.
So, if you were to--
HRA.
That's a good question. We're ready to do that.
I'm sorry. I know this must not be--
I think-- But I think what she's saying, I believe, is increase the deductible that shows up on the card, which would increase to $2,000, maybe to $2,500.
What is that going to do? What is that going to do to the city's cost? Because that's what we're struggling with.
That would bring in by about 2%.
2%? So, we go to an 8% increase?
And we probably not increase our cost that much because, like you were just saying, it hasn't really cost us a tremendous amount to reimburse those because we just don't have that many employees that we're--
Have claims.
Right. So, increase the deductible to $2,500, but increase the HRA amount that you would pay.
Well, let's see some numbers on that for sure, so that we can--
The other thing is, if you're going to do that, and we also looked at, in conjunction with that, changing the out-of-pocket maximum to $4,500. Because again, if you're going to, like now, you're reimbursing 15, you'd be reimbursing $2,000. That's a $0.25.
But we're looking at all options. I mean, like I said, this is 77% of the budget, so you've got to look for something. Do you write other government contracts also?
I have in the past, but not currently.
Not currently? Do you know what?
But also, you made an interesting point, and I will say this. Industry does not do, they don't have the same philosophy about how they help employees as nonprofits and governments. So, yes, you're right. I have a lot of industry that pays only half of the same.
Yeah.
That is not at all consistent with how municipalities or nonprofit institutions work out.
Yeah.
And it's not consistent at all with how counties--
We just heard Mr. Peterson a minute ago, the taxpayers are going to have to pick up the cost of this. There's no magic purse up here, so if you don't have the money, you've got to raise taxes. So, we're looking at all options and we need to. We just need to. It's too high, too large a percentage of a budget.
I know like the city of Rome contracts with another facility and they have a place where the employees can go to that hospital chain to get checks, like--
Urgent care type stuff?
Type urgent care type stuff. Is that--
Right. And there are some industries that do that here.
Is that, well, yeah, is that anyway--
It's not something, I mean, I can help you with some research on some of the insurance companies.
Right.
Or me as a broker, we don't live working that year.
I just didn't know if it far as, okay.
Yeah. That seems to be a question for George because it seems like you could be taking on some liability here. You know, if you're trying to direct people to your plan, they could rather than--
Sure.
Do we offer currently a flex card for employees?
We haven't talked about it.
What was that? What is, I mean, I know what it is. I know what it is. What does it do?
Well, right now, you have a Section 125 plan, which allows your employees to pay the premiums on a pre-tax basis. But there's another part to the Section 125 plan, which allows people to set aside money that's a spending account that they can use to use that debit card--
Sure.
--when they go to pay their customers.
Right.
And the way that works is, they can put in $2,500 discount.
Correct.
So, if they use it, great.
If they don't, you lose it.
Yeah, they lose it.
Or up to $500, you can roll over.
The other problem that you have as a city is somebody could do the very first month that they're employed in on the plan--
Right.
They could go get Lasik surgery and say it's $2,000.
Right.
And if they have promised to pay in $2,000 throughout the payable deduction throughout the year, you would pay that expense as soon as they incurred. And then, they could leave next month. So, you kind of stuck holding back.
Sure.
Just so you know that.
Sure.
So, big, big problem really for the employee side than it is for you because you've got the numbers.
What does that do, though, for the city? I know how it works for the, we do it at our household, but how would that help us?
With the city, I mean, just do the numbers. I mean, if you get, you know, 100 people doing it for $2,000 each, and somebody get a capital, and take that number, you're saving the FICA taxes on them.
Right.
And they're saving the FICA taxes in the federal instead.
Right. It's a--
Oh, no. I mean, I understand. We do it.
The FICA tax, I know that was, it's just that they didn't take the opportunity.
Okay. So, it's just the FICA? The city's benefit is only FICA?
That's right.
But it is a great benefit for the employees, though.
Yes. And there's a third aspect of Section 125, which most employers don't do, and that's allowing an employee to set aside money for childcare. And when you do that, you're not finding the money. They actually, in their account, they have to pay. And potentially, there's a lot more tax savings there, but you don't really have a lot of people doing that.
Other than changing what Andrea was suggesting there and going with a different percentage that the employees pay versus what they're paying now, what other cost savings do you see that are available that we're not utilizing? Are there any to whittle this cost down?
You could change the co-payments, but that has a very nominal impact.
Well, that's what I was looking at there. You've got $8,000 is your difference and that's the big difference is the co-pays between the other--
Yeah. Which I'm not recommending, change to a very restricted formulary and what you might give a lot more off. I have a lot of numbers to tell you with the same deductible.
Right. And can you reiterate the tobacco use? Because I know like--
Again, you know, when I talk to insurance companies about it, they're kind of squirreling about it because it becomes a question of, just another question for George, is when you start doing that, how are you going to, are you going to test for that? And how are you going to do that? And is it really okay?
I mean, I know the state does it.
How do you handle it, have to be a deductible, charging extra for tobacco use?
How do the schools do it?
That's what I'm saying. The schools do.
The schools do it and nobody gets tested.
All the schools do. I mean, it's a state thing.
We just, we sign, you know, stating--
It's an honor system.
Yeah.
But that's been in for what, 10 years, then?
It's been in for a while.
Been a while.
I know, I've heard the hospitals actually--
Does it too?
--do the same thing, but they test. They have a lab.
Yeah.
Is that, okay. I never--
Well, my understanding, when the school first started it, you didn't do any testing. But if you went to a physician with any type of a breathing problem and you had testified you had no tobacco use and it was a tobacco disease, then it wouldn't pick up any of the costs. So, you were gambling that nothing would ever happen to you, basically.
It's like making--
Yeah.
Stating all that.
Exactly, exactly. Well, thank you. And we do appreciate you coming with your, and our condolences to you and your family.
Yeah. We just realized that we didn't, I mean, think they were the same way. I didn't know the connection. We're so sorry.
I'm not apologizing. I have a work session. I have trial in the morning at 9:00. Normally, my, this is the first time I've even been asked questions in four years of budget work sessions. So, if the mayor council's permission--
I don't have a problem. Do you?
No, it's fine.
I'm good.
I'll go tell somebody else.
Eddie?
I will--
Crank it up, buddy.
I'll forward the resolution to the chairman.
Okay.
Now, I will, I'll go over some, I think I can do this fairly quickly. The budget work session summary is that Paul sent everyone is billed around normal operations and revenues directly associated with day-to-day operations. The detailed budget is line by line showing all revenues and income, which includes loans and SPOLOST and things of that nature. And I'll summarize the details so that you can have both perspectives. And it lets us know, some of these really large increases or decreases that we've seen were associated with projects, equipment, loans, and especially purposeless sales tax. I'll begin with the utilities on the sewer treatment revenue side for 2017 and '18. Indirect revenue is down $505,000 due to winding down some sewer plant upgrades with the clean water state revolving loan.[1767.16] Residential sewer usage is up thirty thousand dollars. Commercial usage is up six, eighty, but industrial usage is reduced from two million seventy thousand to one million six hundred ninety thousand, or three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Sewer disposal tickets are down seventy-eight thousand. Sewer taps are up because of a couple of hotels, two hundred thousand. And this kind of leads us to the increase in water transfers to the sewer of three hundred and seventeen thousand. We also using the last of the two thousand five splosh monies in this year's budget. Overall sewer revenues, loans, usage, and splosh projects leads to a reduction of one million six hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, our proposed sewer revenue budget of eight million one hundred and two nine nineteen. That's the revenues. The sewer treatment plant, this budget was reduced from six million one hundred and fifty thousand to five million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The largest increase for the operations that were, that we see and will continue to see is, is the treatment to removal, to remove the phosphorus. And this, this year it'll be two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Increases were also in one vehicle, equipment machinery, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, along with modification to the phosphorus program. Electricity decreased eighty-four thousand dollars to newer equipment and some newer processes. All of the two thousand, all the capital is two thousand five splosh monies. The sewer treatment plant maintenance, very little change from the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand to two hundred and eighty thousand. Sewer treatment sludge disposal, this budget was reduced by a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars due to the sludge disposal truck being purchased in our current year, and brought that down to a hundred and eleven thousand eight ninety-four. The wastewater collection and construction, this budget was also reduced by seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars due to project completion and equipment purchases from the two thousand seventeen splosh and loans, or two thousand eleven splosh and loans. The largest reduction is the completion of the Piska sewer placement. The new budget is two million eighty-one thousand. The lift station, this budget was reduced by eight thousand because of some repairs that we've already completed. So the total wastewater from nine million six hundred and fifty-six thousand to eight million one hundred and two thousand are a reduction in one million five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in total wastewater spending. And as I said, a lot of this is because of projects and splosh and loans. And water, on the water fund revenues, the residential commercial usage increased similar to sewage by two hundred and fifty-three thousand, and industrial decreased by three hundred and fifteen thousand. Again, the two thousand five splosh, along with GIFA projects being completed or near completion, reduced the revenues by two million dollars from fourteen nine fifty to twelve nine fifty-five. Brittany Drive, the largest increase was the payment of notes and bonds related to the phasing from an ongoing construction loan to a construction completion. And this was a four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in construction repayment. Also, the chlorine scrubber was added from the two thousand five splosh at two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So this budget went from one point nine million to two point six, mainly because of repayment of loans. The water plant at Malden Road changes include increases in repair, maintenance of thirty thousand wages and steps, thirty-eight thousand, site improvements, one hundred and ten thousand. Debt decreased two hundred and ninety-three thousand, but transfers to sewer increased three hundred and thirteen thousand. Overall, the budget increased by fifty-eight thousand dollars to five point eight million. Water treatment maintenance, four thousand increase was mainly due to group help, as you would see through almost all departments. The water plant distribution decreased in repairs and renovations from two hundred and fifty-three, two hundred and thirty-five thousand to eighty-six, or a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Water construction, again, major decreases in two thousand seventeen projects and capital equipment. A GIFA funded two-inch galvanize reduction, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. South Calhoun bypassed nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar reduction. Splosh funding for the TACO controls, fifty thousand. Two-inch galvanize, two hundred and sixty thousand. Track skidder for fifty-eight thousand, and other equipment for thirty-two thousand. The two thousand seventeen budget of six million four hundred and eighty-two thousand, the proposed two thousand eighteen budget, three million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So the total water expenses, twelve million nine fifty-five, down from fourteen nine fifty thousand, or one, almost two million dollars less. Electric revenues, charges for electricity, thirty million seven hundred and fifty thousand basically the same as sixteen and seventeen. We had loads that came off of Caltech, Superior, and Piggly Wiggly, but we've added some loads for Engineered Floors, Tires Incorporated, Apache Mills, and First Bank of Calhoun. We anticipate some, some stronger loads from Mohawk and Shaw. The reduction in charges to Mohawk and Shaw for billing communication from forty-four thousand to nineteen thousand, an increase in fuel adjustment of a million dollars. The environmental compliance has been taken off the table totally, and the unrealized gain or loss increased from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand. Total revenues of thirty-seven six thirty-one, down from thirty-eight million eight oh four. The distribution side expenses include one additional lineman and step increases for those who make job transitions, and legal expenses are, are up in anticipation of the North Georgia EMC lawsuit. And there are numerous special projects budgeted at two hundred thousand, and a hundred and thirty-five thousand in contingency was removed because of not being used in the past.
Eddie, one second. Is the Walker liability cost gonna fall in this year or next year?
The Walker, we are hoping, well, it fell in this year. We are hoping to get back the bulk of that because basically we won that lawsuit.
Right.
And we're working with the insurance company now on that. The maintenance for the turbine generator is listed at a hundred and forty-five thousand, but this also includes the three Caterpillar generators at the sewer plant, water plant, and Cusawatie intake. Telecommunications, overall telecom revenues have been, been basically stable for the past several years. In two thousand ten, they were right at nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar revenues, and then two thousand eleven, a million fifty, and twelve, a million eighty, thirteen, basically the same. And this year, we're looking at a million three thirty because we use some splosh. But our projection for seventeen eighteen is one million one hundred and eighty-six thousand, so it's basically been very stable on the expense side and the revenue side. On our internal service funds, charges to the general and utilities was reduced by a hundred thousand dollars. Utility administration, this is Paul's and some of Larry's salary. Larry moved to the city planner position and includes, also includes debt repayment of eighty thousand to electric for one million two for the renovation of the utilities building. Finance includes, this includes nine current employees for general and utilities. This budget was reduced two thousand dollars from last year, looking at office supplies and printers and travel and education and things of that nature. Tellers, the, this budget increased two thousand mainly due to group insurance. Purchasing, the budget remained basically the same. Engineering, that's one area that Paul and I looked at closely, and this is, this may be one place we want to take out, a new pickup truck. I think we do because, you know, it's one thing for the guys who, who work twenty-four seven, and two o'clock in the morning, they're, they're over at Fairmount fixing the water leak. But I think the engineering group can, can work basically with what they have now, so Paul and I, we talked about that a good bit, and I think we can pull that off. Work order dispatch, this department is up five thousand dollars basically due to the insurance. And the geographic information system, that's basically the same budget except for the group insurance. And utility customer service, Joyce retired, and the gap was filled with Judith and the insurance not needed by some others. So we had a reduction of thirty-one thousand in the customer service. Meter reading, the budget reduced from three ninety-five thousand to three twenty-two, no capital, and less repair of equipment. And utility billing, basically the same. There was an increase in the group insurance. So that, that gets the utility side. Under general, we have, we have five large, we have a hundred line items in, in our revenues, but we have five very large items. Last year's digest was seven hundred and twenty-eight million five hundred, and I'm using a three percent increase in, in growth for digest, and this will get us to about seven hundred and fifty million dollars, and it should generate about fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars more than the current year. The city franchise, five percent, the electric, water, and sewer is based on gross sales. It declined slightly, and rents and royalties, six percent of gross sales dipped slightly. Local option sales tax, we've seen a decline over the years, and it's, it's basically now flat, where for years it had been going up, and we attribute that, some of it, to the lower gasoline prices, the energy tax had an impact. And it seems, we came out of the recession, we saw yearly increases across the board in, in local option sales tax, but there again, we, we don't see that anymore. Insurance premium tax is a one percent levy on all life insurance policies in Calhoun, and this, this tax has continued to increase each year. We're forecasting three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less in the general fund revenue than sixteen seventeen, so as I mentioned earlier, this leaves us with that shortfall of four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Mayor Council, no particular change on the line items, the legal is up, and we do have a hundred thousand in contingency funds at this time, and I talked about that a little earlier. Total budget is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. City administrator, the city administrator and city clerk are in this budget. Also, the administrator budget includes the utility inter-fund transfers to golf, golf debt, recreation, and splosh excise tax. And this budget is reduced about a hundred thousand dollars from the current year. No particular changes in tax admin, teller, human resources. Human resources is made up of Linda and Brooke. Municipal court has a hundred and eighty thousand dollars expenses in the sixteen seventeen budget we're in for the Walker case, but as I said, we're working with the insurance company to get that money returned to Calhoun. The municipal court has expenses of three hundred and eleven thousand and transfers to the general fund, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, out of total fines of four hundred and eighty, four hundred and thirty thousand. We also send a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to Gordon County Department Revenue, Peace Officers Association, Victim Assistant, Department of Human Resources, Georgia Treasury, intelligent defense fees, Georgia driver's training, and victims' compensation welfare. So they get a good bulk of, of the, of the, our fines, so to speak. The library, we're gonna be turning over the employees on July the first to the Dalton Regional, and we'll send thirty-five percent of the salaries and benefits, and the county will cover the other sixty-five percent, just as we have in the past. And we also have a thirty thousand dollar allotment that we, we send them. Of course, the building belongs to the city. The building inspection has the city planner in this budget, and I mentioned that a little earlier about looking for cost cutting. DDA Main Street, no particular changes. And the airport, again, they're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand from the city and a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand from the county to, to take on the new, the new hangar project. Police administration, five full-time, same as the budget of sixteen seventeen. Police detective, group insurance drove up the ten thousand dollar increase. Patrol group increased, insurance was up fifty thousand dollars, and the total budget up a hundred and sixty-four. I mentioned the, the employee who was deployed to Afghanistan, who's back now, or be back on the force in May or June.
Oh, she gone?
She was gone.
About a year? That's what I thought.
Our work miss comp is up thirty-five thousand dollars. We've had some, we've had some claims here and there. We have fifty full-time police, fifty-one when the soldier returns in May or June. Special operations, no particular change. Animal control, very little change. Clyde is, is considered part of the police department because he is eligible to keep his police retirement, where the other part of animal control is under public works. Police dispatching is set by the Gordon County and the fire administration. The biggest change is inter-fund GIS work that, that GIS has done internally for fire department, for matting and things of that nature. Firefighting, we added one firefighter last year after this budget, and I've got a question mark by that, whether it was one or two.
Two.
Okay, two. Group insurance went up thirty-three thousand and ten thousand protective gear and vehicle, normal vehicle repairs was up nine thousand. Fire inspection, two regular employees, fire training division, very little change. Nine-one-one dispatch, one person is by the county, and we have twelve thousand dollars in the budget to repair some buildings. Animal control, very little change. Public works, the admin increased one percent. That's, that's Kevin. The main part, highways and streets, a two percent increase. This is basically due to the, the day-to-day operations, and that's where most of our manpower's located. Street cleaning, vehicle repairs, it's driven it up ten thousand dollars. Street lighting, this increase is not by us, it's by North Georgia Power and North Georgia EMC. Traffic engineering, asphalt is the driver here, and with unexpected projects, just like last year, we had, we had more ALMIG than we had anticipated, and we had a special project, Yellow Jacket Drive, that when they come in and say, we'll, we'll give you seventy percent if you pick up thirty percent, you, you don't turn those down. And the maintenance shop and public works, very little has changed. These are the people you see out on the job and keeping the equipment running. Cemetery, very little change, and this basically completes the general fund, and expenses of thirteen million eight hundred and eleven nine forty-six, and revenues of thirteen three thirty-five, or that shortfall of four thirty, four fifty-six. Under recreation revenues, we, the county four eighty-nine agreement started at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars July the first in two thousand two, and with the three percent added each year, this figure is now up to four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And the general fund transfers, four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to recreation, and we are budgeting ninety-three thousand seven fifty from the hotel motel. And even with the increases in tournaments and overall participation, the bottom line expenses are only up four thousand dollars from the current year.
How much is coming from hotel motel?
Ninety-three seven fifty. Golf, on the revenues, we, we use the same formula that we did last year, using the Gordon County four eighty-nine recreation agreement at two percent, which comes to eighty-five thousand. And golf player fees have increased, so we reduced the transfer from the general fund by thirty-four thousand, and overall, we reduced golf by seventy-nine thousand from the actual nine hundred and thirteen thousand for two thousand sixteen seventeen. One thing, last year, we put off purchasing new carts and purchased, or have it in the budget to purchase batteries. And as, as David and I were talking earlier, at the current time, we have a fleet of seventy-eight with sixty running, and twenty are two thousand tens, and twenty are two thousand sevens, and twenty are two thousand fives. We can trade our entire fleet of seventy-eight and get seventy-eight thousand dollar cash value towards sixty-five new Yamaha gas carts, and well, it's forty-nine thousand dollars a year for four years, and a thousand dollars at the end for each, and we would own the carts, and we would expect the life of those to be fifteen years.
Are we bringing hotel motel tax into golf?
Uh, yes.
To the tune of how much?
Uh.
I don't think any hotel motel tax.
Let's see, we have forty-nine, and, and, and from the general fund, I thought we had three.
I thought we did two. I thought we were bringing in hotel motel.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did.
This year's budget, it was a half a percent.
Hotel motel tax?
Hotel motel tax.
So what is a half a percent?
About forty, seventy thousand.
Yeah, half of the ninety-seven thousand.
And you know, that, that's an option under airport because it would qualify for hotel motel, certainly with tourism and development with those new, we may want to shift that off into the airport.
And this is our last year of golf debt, and then we'll own the golf course, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Now, when you say this year, that, that'll be two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen eighteen, yeah.
We'll be making a payment in the eighteen budget year.
It'll be, include that in this year's budget we're working on now.
Okay.
Under solid waste, in February, we had, well, that's, that's some notes I have. Our biggest change in solid waste is recycling, and recycling revenues are listed at a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Sell the materials and then contributions, which is very creative. Jail inmates, Michael's Carpet Trailers and hauling, Malden's Trailers and hauling, volunteers, time and vehicles, the recycling coordinator, Liberty Tire Grant, Mannington Grant, Mohawk Grant, NEPD Tire Grant, and the Housing Authority Labor Grant all make up for a balanced recycling budget somehow. So basically, that's, that's the utility and the general.
So basically, that's, that's the utility and the general. Sounds good. Looks like we're going to have to do some cost-cutting measures and some prioritizing of what's most important to our citizens.
And what are the one percent increases in salary? I mean, far as, and I'd just say one percent, because we can do the math on two or three percent.
One hundred and thirty thousand bucks. One twenty-nine.
Oh, yeah.
So, as I, as I started out, we had, we had several areas that, that we could, we could look to, and of course, you know, I always go back to, to a military tax increase, and I'm not sure what the, what the council's feelings is on that, or some kind of combination along with, along with some other cuts. You know, our digest is seven hundred and fifty million, and in two thousand and six, it was eight hundred and fifty million, so we, we never recovered. We recovered, but then we went to eighty percent on free port, and that brought the digest back down. And so, and our military at one point nine eight has been that way for several years. Well, let's look at getting our insurance cost factor more in line with what all people are, and see what that would do on just savings. I'll have Linda and Jennifer get back together, and see what we can come up with there.
Andrea, that was a good idea.
And look and see if there's, do we need to bid outside of Jennifer and her group? What is Rome, Dalton, and Carter's will doing as far as insurance providers? Well, I know there's only like four providers in the industry. Yeah. So, and then we... I just wonder if they have a better...
...insurance, they have in-house clinic, and all of that, fair league operation, but it's all in-house.
Right. Do you know about Carter's will and Dalton's, Linda?
Not that I know of.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to have to get a handle on that one sooner or later, because it continues to bite us in increments of every two to three years, seems like. Yeah, we had, we had a really good run, some really good experience, and then we had, we had one million dollar claim. Of course, you don't... Sure. Another insurance company takes over there, but we have it though, too. Yeah. And, but we had, it's always a roll of the dice, flip the coin. I know GMA was not willing to bid it. They tried for years to bid it, and then last year, they didn't want to bid it. We probably need to revisit them and just see. I'm sure they, they still have enough of an issue where they won't want to, but I think we owe it to the citizens to just ask and see what kind of bid they come in with. We'll look at that, too.
Signet chose not to bid, I think, was there another one?
Let's see, Alliance bid.
I guess I was thinking about Alliance.
Two of them did not bid.
Yeah.
United Healthcare, I think, didn't bid, wasn't it?
Oh, United.
Or did United do?
So we are, but we're, we're in a really good position with our two.
Say, yeah.
Splosh. And, and then we're, you know, four hundred and fifty shy on our general, and then, like you say, the, the airport could possibly be maneuvered out of hotel motel. Well, we just need to look back, I'm fairly certain we voted on that. We just need to make that happen. It's going to be the next economic engine, from my perspective in this community, something that in theory should grow, whether it does or not, but we hope we're not bringing in a ton of money with golf, or if that's a six hundred thousand policy out here.
If I'm understanding things right, we're going to look at the health insurance and back then, the two and a half percent, I was figuring out that we would take the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think we need to get a county answer, just see if they will participate in that, and temporarily at least, we'll figure on taking that out of reserves, because it's a, it's a loan that's anticipated to be paid back.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, like I said, we've already voted on that, so that shouldn't be a problem.
I remember the discussion, I didn't remember a vote, but anyway.
If we have it, we need to do it.
Do what?
See, if we have it, we need to do it.
I totally agree.
But, but we plan on that, and we'll look and figure in the pay rises as we move on.
I think that the county sees that we go to one fifty, they will. Yeah, sure they will. And they've already said it. Let's, let's, let's don't leave any rock unturned as we look at this. I'll be calling you with some thoughts and ideas, so let's see what we can do. Keep from impacting the taxpayers.
When's our next budget meeting?
May eighth will be the first public hearing.
Okay.
Well, I got a rule, I got to be in Asheville.
Okay.
Six hours to go.
Thank y'all very much for...